Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for August 23rd, 2021, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session. Two items were taken up in executive session. One is related to contract negotiations with IMA. We had that conversation and the conversation is still going. That is one of the unions related to the Water Department. And the second was to address an open meeting law complaint by Attorney Tomlinson for the Port and Ember Restaurant. In that meeting, we acknowledged receipt of their open meeting law complaint. We discussed it and we voted to accept the recommendation in response from our attorneys. With that, we are going to open up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up tonight is old business. It's related to a LIP application for Chloee's Path, an affordable housing project. The applicants have asked for an extension until the 23rd and I've granted that. So there'll be no conversation tonight about Chloee's Path. Attorney Singer?
Point of order, asked for a continuance to October 4th.
October 4th.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is. October 24th. I mean, October 4th, sorry. Can't read tonight. So I'm granting them that extension. Onto public comments and announcements. Update from Cape Light Compact on available programs.
Will somebody advance the slide?
Absolutely. Jamie?
I'll do my best to keep up with you. Did I just public announce?
We did, yeah.
Nope, actually, public comment announcement is on there and you are up after this one.
All right, I'm going to tell I had a brief panic attack because I forgot all the cords to my computer and one of the staff lives in Harwich, is on her way here. So I'm going to say, turn around and go back to eating dinner if you don't mind. Never mind, all set. I thought we were going to have a hurricane. I took all my computers home to work and good news is I didn't need them. All right, so thank you. Nice to see everybody. My name is Maggie Downey and I'm the administrator of the Cape Light Compact. And I am here tonight to give you and your audience a brief update on the Cape Light Compact activities. This, if you remember, we come every year just to talk and we look back because the Compact's programs are a calendar year. So this is a look back to 2020 and then I'm going to also rope in some stuff that's happening now and then we'll be happy to come back when, next time in early 2021 to give you another update. So the first slide that everybody is looking at, it just shows the impacts of the energy efficiency program since the Cape Light Compact's been running these programs 2001. So since 2001, we have reinvested $350 million of energy efficiency rate payer funds, all paid by you and I, residents and businesses, and kept those dollars on the Cape and Vineyard as opposed to, prior to that, they went into a much larger pot within the Comelectric and now National EverSource territory. And what is that equivalent to? It's equivalent to saving 5.1 billion kilowatt hours of electricity. And on below, you can see just, I wanted to put that into perspective, it's approximately taking over 791,000 automobiles off the road for a year. It's enough energy to heat, cool, and run over 400,000 homes. So a significant benefit, though, that 350 million leads to 1.2 billion in benefits because for every dollar you invest, you get approximately $2 and change in return in benefits. So the next slide. The next slide is about what's happened in the last couple of years in Harwich, in the town of Harwich. And you can see we have robust participation and significant investment in the town of Harwich in 2020. And that's a big surprise for us, given COVID and the pandemic and these programs were actually shut down for several months while we, I'll talk about that in the next slide, why we had to reorganize and figure out how to deliver. Because energy efficiency is all about being in your home or in your business. So I just want to point out one number and it says it in the asterisk. We switched how we count customers. So in 2018, you'll see there were almost 3,700 customers and it looks like it dropped precipitously. But in fact, what that shows, in 2018, we used to count a customer every time you participated in the program. And we changed statewide because it's, we were overcounting. So if you submitted a rebate for a dehumidifier and then had a home energy assessment, you can't count it twice. So now we're counting it one at a time. So it does show over the last three years that we've roughly invested, returned and kept in Harwich $5.6 million in energy efficiency funds. And as I said, 2020, given the shutdown, we were, we had quite a robust participation in the program. As we, I think we all know, a lot of people were investing and taking home improvement projects and businesses as well. So the next slide. So what did we do in last year in response to COVID? We quickly, as I said, we shut down like everyone did in March and we were not able to reopen the energy efficiency programs till the end of June. And what we did is we developed and designed virtual home energy assessments. And they were so successful and had such an impact in participation that we have now made them part of the statewide energy efficiency program. So customers today and during COVID had the opportunity of using their smartphones or their iPads to do a walk around, send us information such, and we could, we would do the assessment virtually and then come out with specific contractors for targeted work that needed to be done at a later date using all PPE and health and safety standards. We also, through last year, response to the economic needs, many people were put out of work, we increased our, and changed our incentives for insulation and air sealing up to 100%. So we ran that and that created a, quite a backlog of work, which was good for the contractor community as well as customers who were participating in the program. We also offered the enhanced refrigerator program and recycling. We increased the incentive from 75 to 125. So normally now, if you have a dog over a refrigerator or freezer that's in a garage or in a basement, we will come to your house at no cost, take it, remove it from the home and fully recycle it. And then when you fill out a rebate form, we'll send you a check for $75. And again, that's fully recycled and taken off the stream. We also, for small businesses, we are running, we kept small business enhanced incentives much longer because small businesses were shut down, they didn't have the customers, they might not have had the money. So rather, residential's were, uptake was like this, the small business was slightly slower. So we kept the 100% incentives for LED lamps and fixtures, HVAC lighting and controls, water save equipment, pipe insulation is in place until October 31st of this year. Specifically, these, most of these incentives benefit our small-ins, bed and breakfasts or restaurants. There are a lot of very instant savings measures that we can offer for businesses that are at 100%. Everything, as always, is listed on our website and the best way to find out is to give us a call and have us come out and look at your business and see where we can make improvements and what needs to be done to help reduce your overall KWH consumption, which then will lead to a reduction in your electric bill. We also did our Main Streets program, which is very successful. We were here in Harwich in April and basically, that's a blitz. We work with the Chamber of Commerce, we work with the town to sponsor a one-week event where businesses know that we're coming out. We bring all the contractors, bring their trucks, and they do everything installed in that one, in that one week. So trying to minimize the amount of disruption or closure and interruption with business. So that was offered here. We served 24 participants and brought back 160, almost $164,000 in incentives and had a significant kilowatt hour savings. These Main Streets, we offer periodically. We usually wait a year or two just to see the churn and participation and we'll target next time we're in town, areas that maybe did not have a higher penetration on that. So questions on what I've done? Otherwise, I'm going to, I can roll right into 2021.
Questions from the board? Don, Mary?
So this is one of my favorite slides. They just put the text in here, they took out the graphic that I liked that showed the house. But this is the residential rebate program. Every customer, we all pay into these, this fund on our electric bill and we're all entitled once a year, if you need or so desire, to call and have a home energy assessment, have us come out and evaluate the house to see, are there any opportunities for, to save any energy efficiency measures? Specifically, ceiling, insulation. We also have several, we introduced ground source heat pumps and a rebate for ground source heat pumps. Those are the heating system, whole house heating and cooling that actually uses the temperature of the earth. It requires drilling. It's an expensive, usually done mostly in new construction. But we, in 2021, have just introduced a new rebate program for ground source heat pumps at $2,000 per ton. And I believe the average incentive for a ground source heat pump is around $10,000. And air source heat pumps, which is $1,250 a ton, the average incentive to replace your oil or propane system, you'll end up with about a $5,000 rebate, just on average. It all depends upon the size of your house. But there are significant rebates. The programs are always changing. I think the first time I came and spoke to all of you, it was the introduction of CFLs, our squirrely light bulbs. And now we've, they are obsolete, we've all moved to LEDs. And the programs continue to evolve, which is obvious in our heating systems as we're looking to more and more respond to recently passed climate bill. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a second. So we go to the next slide. So we have a renter and income-eligible offer for customers who are, have income levels and these income levels are on our website, so it's easy to find out, do you fit into any of these income classifications? If you are 60% or below the state median income, you are eligible for 100% saving, replacement of your heating system, appliance upgrades, air sealing, so all the measures that for market rate customers require co-pays by law, anyone who's 60% or below gets these at no cost. We also offer insulation, if you're 61 to 80%, no-cost insulation. And if you're, you know, if you think, you know, everybody thinks, oh, I'm not in this income there, you know, you'd be surprised how many of our retired municipal employees that may have retired 20, 10, 15, 20 years ago are, they're on a limited income, fit in these characters, in these income brackets. You're also eligible for a 30% total discount off your electric bill if you are on 60% or less. And again, all of these programs are out there, available to each and every one of us, residents and businesses. And, you know, I look at my goal to make sure people are aware of them. And if you have any questions about eligibility or what's included, we're here to help and answer those questions. So it's an important public service announcement, especially on that 30% overall discount on your electric bill. Want to go to the next slide? I think, I know I presented this when I was here, it must have been in 2018, talking about the three-year plan, member of the Cape Light Compact's Energy Efficiency Plan and our budgets are three-year cycles. So we are in the last year of our fourth three-year plan. And in this plan, we proposed to pilot a program called CVEO, Cape and Vineyard Electrification. The objective was to take 250 single-family deed-restricted residential properties that heat with either oil, propane, or electric resistance heat and move them to air source heat pumps. Now you're moving, taking a delivered or a fossil fuel out and putting in a heat pump was, it's an electric form of heat, it's a high efficiency, but it's still electric heat. Electricity rates are still high in the state of Massachusetts. So this pilot was pairing solar PV to offset, so that you actually are producing enough of, generating enough electricity to offset your overall use, to really minimize that electric bill, and installing a battery system for both storage, demand response, as well as resiliency. We propose CVEO because the data, what the data's revealed over time is those that are participating, especially in solar and renewable, are those who are above market, they are the well-to-do, or those who have expendable cash. The low-income and moderate-income customers are being left behind because of the high upfront cost to install. If you want to do the right thing for climate change or you want to make an impact and you want to get off of oil, replacing your heating system and then pairing it with solar can, is a significant cost. It can be about $40,000 to do both at the same time. So the data supports that, the law of unintended consequences, those that move to solar and got all the S-Rex and all of the Rex advantages are really those that don't need that revenue stream. They, again, law of unintended consequences and who's been left behind are low and moderate income customers. So this pilot is pending before the Department of Public Utilities to determine, hopefully we will get approval through the next three-year plan to move forward with this to, this also takes some unique ownership models. We are trying to maximize the amount of incentives. So we are going to, we have an RFP that will go out and we will work with a third party who can take advantage of the investor accelerated depreciation and the investor tax credits. So this is a process where they own the system on, you know, on a low-income deed-restricted property or moderate income. And then at the end of the 10-year, which is the end of the ITC and accelerated depreciation, the system reverts to the owner at no, no cost. During that time, there is a operation and O&amp;M, operation and maintenance contract so that the systems are maintained, there's some training, so that we can move these customers into a place where they have a net zero home. And because it's a deed-restricted property, it stays with that house. And the lifetime of both the solar and heating systems is 20 to 25 years. And CVEO is, I don't know, I'm not sure if everybody is familiar with the climate bill that was just recently passed by the legislature in July. The climate bill, and I talked a little bit about this, has changed our world. Cape Light Compact Energy Efficiency Program, since we started, was about reducing kilowatt hours, saving energy. We are now been given a new mandate, which is about reducing greenhouse gases. So that is about strategic electrification and moving, you've seen it, I think there was a front, there was an article in yesterday's Globe about, we have to change out 100,000 homes a year in order to reach the state Global Warming Solution Act goals. Well, the legislature has tasked that with the program administrators in Massachusetts to use the Mass Save programs and the funds that we all pay in our electric bill to achieve a significant portion of those goals. So you will see in the next plan that we will be filing in October 31st before the Department of Public Utilities, you will see not only energy reductions, but you'll see greenhouse gas reductions, which is putting, we'll be delivering new programs, new measures. It will be, you know, everything comes with a cost. As you, the more you do, you know, we have to balance the bill impacts with how much, how quickly can you do this and how can we pay it? But make no mistake, we've been, these, these costs have been imposed upon our electric and gas bills in order to achieve statewide goals. And, you know, it's kind of not in many of everyone's conversation, you know, the climate bill's passed, it's law, but nobody talks about it. Nobody talks about how it's going to be impacted and who's paying for it. So I just want to make sure that when, next time I'm back, that we can remind you that we talked about it, so it's not, well, Maggie Downey, why is my electric bill? My electric bill's so high because Maggie Downey introduced all these programs. I want to make sure that it's, that we have a, start to have the conversation about the requirements of state law to move and to electrify our homes. And, and that comes with providing rebates and the rebates are paid for by all of us. And CVEO is a very small slice of helping low and moderate income, but we will see an expansion of all-electric new construction. And again, why are we doing this with electricity? The state, as part of this, the state's goals are now to bring in hydro from Canada, offshore wind, all lower-cost forms of electricity to help stabilize or, and/or lower electric rates. So, next slide. Some good news during the pandemic. I was sent a notification by the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Utility Service about a loan program. And we submit, this is a zero-interest loan and we submitted an application and we were invited last August to submit a full-blown proposal to our U.S. Rural Utility Service. And we submitted an application for $4.9 million to administer a solar loan program. So this is the, if approved, we're still pending approval and review of our application, which was submitted on December 27th. We would administer, we have 20 years to pay back this $4.9 million loan at no interest. So we would, we are loaning it out to customers. We put out an RFP, we selected our third-party administrator, Cape Cod Five, won the, was awarded the RFP. So they would administer and do all the loan, all the paperwork and the billing and the invoicing and the collecting of the funds. And our interest, it'll be a 10-year loan, up to $50,000 for residents and small businesses at an interest rate of 2.25. We're continuing to work to see if we can get that lower, but that is the lowest commercially available loan for solar customers. Again, not targeting low and moderate income customers, but those that are actually can qualify for a loan and have the ability to pay back. So we're hoping to hear this year from RUS. I was told it takes up to over a year for them to review everything and get us the paperwork, but hopeful that we will be able to roll out this program end of 2021. Next slide. So Green Communities, the Compact through Margaret Song, I know we work closely with the town and continues to provide support service with, I don't know why it says Yarmouth on there because it's supposed to be in Harwich, but I know the dollar amount is correct.
Mary.
But that's the $152,000 grant for the town of Harwich, that's through the Green Communities. And I know, did we go into the next round with REPA? Did Margaret help with?
I believe we did, yeah, through Sean Libby and the maintenance crew, yep.
And again, our role here is to help make sure that it's mostly the reporting, you know, it's a carrot and a stick, you get, you get grant funds to administer and implement that, but it also comes with a lot of reporting requirements. And, you know, staff has mastered it and is here to provide service to make sure that your job is to identify the project spends the money and we help you with the reporting so that those dollars continue, grant dollars continue to flow. And the $152,000 was used for the Brooks, one of them was the Brooks Free Library. Next slide. Here is our power supply update. These are our current rates. It is, we are currently below the EverSource rates, which is basic service, and on the residential and the industrial rate. I think the small CNI rate is slightly above. And our power supply rates are always, when I say slightly, this is a mill adder game. I remember many of you, we had this conversation late 90s where we thought we were going to save pennies on the, in the, in the competitive market. It is truly a mill adder. We're talking a tenth of a cent. We're either a tenth of a cent below or a tenth of a cent above, but it's an option. Customers can choose their supplier. We always, you know, your two safest bets are either EverSource's basic service, Compact's basic service. If you decide to get into the market, it's always important to make sure you read the terms and conditions. And if anyone has any questions, we frequently help people who find themselves, you know, I just looked at my electric bill and I don't know why I'm paying this. So if you have any questions about your supplier, don't hesitate to give us a call and we can help walk you through it so that at least you understand who your supplier is, et cetera. And we also have, our supply is 100% renewable and we also have, for those that want to even go further, we have a CLC Local Green. We buy the Rex from the Harwich landfill and many of, all the town landfills for our CLC Local Green product. And that is the end of my presentation. I know I went through an awful lot very, very quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you, Maggie. Questions from the board? Larry?
Well, I think you overwhelmed us, Maggie, with the information. You talk a lot about rebates and a lot of the information going out. Is it possible to get a financial statement of revenue coming in and costs going out? So you can get an idea of?
Larry, my old age, I have hearing aids, so I'm going to have to turn them up because I'm having trouble hearing you. Hold on, sorry.
My question is, you talked about the, a lot of financial issues and rebates, you know, money we pay out. Is it possible to get a financial statement of revenues coming in and costs so we, we get some idea of what, at least on a percentage-wise, you know, what's going out in rebates, what's going out various forms?
Sure.
That'd be interesting to know.
I believe I sent it to, I know Valerie has it and I sent out our audited financial statements, which actually shows that.
Okay.
So I know I emailed the 2019, because they're doing our 2020 now, way, way, it probably came to you, Joe, in the middle of COVID and, you know, early, the first quarter of this year. I also have on my website, and Larry, I think I still have your email, I can send it to you, every month, we give the board an update and our energy efficiency budget is there. So that would show you like how much dollars went in the residential home energy assessment program. So I can send that to you, too. And it's, that's on the website for any member of the public that wants to see, you know, it's a, it's a lot of money. It's a $50 million annual budget. And so each month, I give a report to the board, so I can send that to you.
Yes, as in a format that I can understand, is it?
Yes.
Basically, not line by line in detail, but category, details?
Yep, it has, yep, I will. And then I can, I can, I'll send it to you and then if there's any questions on, what does RCD mean? I'll try to give you, we have a little bit of a guide.
Right.
But if you have any questions on it, I'd be happy to email you back and forth.
Thank you.
Mary?
No, I just find heat pumps very interesting. I read that article in the Globe and then read this and thought they're circling me now, so.
Yep, I have.
It's pretty interesting technology.
It is. I have an, I had an all-electric house and I converted mine in 20, I remember it was, because it was a blizzard the next day, January of 2017, from the base board to coal-climate air-source heat pumps. And it lowered my overall electric bill and gave me what my husband's most happy with, which is air conditioning and dehumidification instead of window units and dehumidifiers everywhere. It's, it's, but it is, it's an aesthetic issue, too. Some people don't like that cassette, some people, but if you have ducted, so, but it is, it's a technology that continues to, to grow. It's very common in Europe. A lot of our European homes are heated that way, but.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to go in a completely different direction. If you were to look at the brochures that have Mass Saves constituent members on it, we're really the only place that's taking care of ourselves. I mean, and it has always been that way. I'm kind of proud of the fact that it's a homegrown system. It's not dependent on, you know, one of the power companies managing it. And I think that the outcomes are much better because of that.
Thank you. You've had wonderful board representatives from Barry Worth to Valerie Bell. And I'm trying to think of Barry, it might have just been Barry, but I don't remember, but they both, they put a lot of time and effort on your behalf.
All set, Don?
Yeah.
And I'm all set. Thank you very much, Maggie.
Thank you. Nice to see everybody. But, this is my first live meeting in person. I was just like so excited to not have a Zoom meeting. So thank you all very much.
Thanks, Maggie. Next up is the announcement of the candidate's forum for the special election being held September 21st.
How are you? Chris Joyce from Harwich Voter Information Committee. On Thursday, September 2nd, here in the Griffin Room, 6:00 p.m., Voter Information Committee is hosting a candidate's forum for the selectman's vacancy. It'll be moderated by the League of Women Voters of Cape Cod Area, Joan Craig, an experienced moderator. And we're hoping many voters will come. They're obviously welcome and they should bring their issue-related questions. Very quickly, each candidate, once asked, agreed to participate. That was wonderful. And then I'll just mention that, by the way, September 1st, if you're not registered, is your last day to register for the special, this special election. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. This next one is just an announcement. The Board of Selectmen will hold a dedicated wastewater meeting on August 30th, 2021, which is next Monday night in this room. And I believe Joe walked out and I'll confirm, I believe it's at 6:00 p.m.
Yeah.
Time's not on there. The next up is an announcement. Jake's at the Harbor, which is the snack shack at Sacquetucket Harbor, opened August 21st. So that is now open to the public.
Took a good weekend.
Yeah, yeah. Opened in time for the hurricane. Consent agenda?
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda, which has two items. One is the resignation of Arthur Ruse from the planning board. And the second is to approve the special town election warrant for Tuesday, September 21st, 2021.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. I would just ask that we give our thanks to Arthur Ruse for his service to the town of Harwich. Any comments from the board?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero. I'm going to stand by on this one until Joe comes back. Why don't we take up B? That's just a normal course.
I move that we vote to review and amend Section 1-17, disciplinary guidelines of the Harwich Board of Selectmen liquor license regulations to include a language change from 30 from third offense to third and subsequent offenses.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. As the board may recall, we've taken this up twice. We were waiting to hear back from Legal on whether or not we needed to do a public hearing, and Legal's opinion was we did not. But we have talked about it at two open meetings. Any discussion?
I think they're well stated and clear. I think making summary of them is even, makes it easier to understand, so.
Thank you, Larry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going on to C as well, Mary.
Move that we vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license for the Harwich Cranberry Arts and Music Festival to be held on September 18th, 2021, and September 19th, 2021, 100 Oak Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ed, do you want to give a pitch? Brief.
This is, we're here later than we normally would, but we've made the decision to go ahead with the festival later than we normally would because nobody knew what was happening back in November, when we'd normally start this whole process. Yet the festival will be going on, as far as we know, unless something cataclysmic happens with the craft show, the music tent, fireworks, and a food court and picnic area, lots of community booths and a beer and wine garden. We'll also be on, I think it's Saturday, it's a Saturday, first Saturday after Labor Day, if I can't remember. Is that the 10th?
11th.
11th. Is Beach Day down at Red River Beach, and one of the only things that's gonna potentially hold that up is coming up with enough volunteers to put the event on, because a lot of our committee members are still not real keen on being in crowds. We are very low in volunteers, and so if anybody out there has the time on that Saturday to come down and help us out, we're gonna be reaching out to some of the groups at the high school to help with the kids' games on the beach, but we're really direly in need of some adults to help out, run it and man it. We'll be having a committee meeting, 5:00 on the 31st, at Brooks Park outside, under the big Cypress tree. And if anybody wants to volunteer, that would be a good time to show up and hear about the event and what sort of help we need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Joe, could you go or bounce back up to the dedicated wastewater meeting on the 30th? Is that at 6:00 PM?
That's correct.
6:00 PM.
Yep, 6:00 PM here in Griffin Room.
Great. Thank you.
Did you want to go back to A?
We are gonna go back to A. So next under new business is Harwich Community Playground, which would be located at the elementary school. We're gonna take this in two parts. The first part tonight is for the board to vote to accept the gift from Monomoy Regional School District, a donation in the amount of $57,519.51. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All set? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gift has been accepted.
I move to award the contract for construction, Design Build LLC DBA Childscapes in the amount of $317,000.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. So we'll go on to discussion. We'll start with the board. Larry?
My question early on was actually the, how comfortable we were with the design? Because it's a large playground, but the CPC's gone through this, the, I think it was all the town meetings, so I'm okay with it. And the procurement process, I think, was followed to the letter, so I'm okay with it.
Thank you, Larry. Mary?
Likewise, and it's within the budget, correct, Joe?
Correct. That's why the, excuse me, the donation vote needed to come first. That amount that was always contemplated, coming from the school through the PTO, was necessary to fully fund the contract.
I have nothing else.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's something that has to happen for the kids. It should have happened a while ago, but in saying that, I'm probably not gonna, I'm not gonna vote for this contract. I am disturbed by someone getting paid at the front end to determine that the old playground had to go, but also being part of the procurement at the tail end for the actual purchase of it. And to Larry's point, the problem with playground equipment, which I used to contract for, for the federal government, is everybody is slightly different in terms of their construction. And I don't mean the macro, like put a tower over there and a swing set over here. Everyone's convinced that they've got a better polycarbonate something or other, or an enamelled steel something or other. And the way these things are expressed in specs are very hard, because everybody's got some sort of a carve-out, and it really is important to know the mechanism. And I've always had this feeling on any contract, if you start at the beginning of it, you can't be at the end of it. So it's for that express reason, but I do believe that it's something that needs to happen.
Thank you, Don. Joe, just on that, we had that conversation in our weekly meeting, can you just explain to the public how we address that?
Certainly, and, excuse me, if I've heard the conversation correctly, I would draw the board's attention to the memo that was included in your packet, and I instructed our Assistant Town Administrator, Megan Eldridge, to record the conversations that she and I had, but also conversations that I directed her to have with the Attorney General's Office regarding this bid. So I'm gonna, if I may, Mr. Chairman, read from that, put that out there and then explain where this came from. When, so the reason why I say, Megan, our Assistant Town Administrator, as the board knows, has a primary responsibility for procurement, so as Chief Procurement Officer, I'll authorize any documents such as these bid documents to be sent out to the, to the public through the requirements of the Commonwealth. Megan is responsible for managing and reviewing it, and then we have discussions. Upon receipt of the bids that were received relative to this contract before you tonight for the construction, Megan noticed similarities in company names, if you will, specifically Childscapes. She had an intuitive concern about that, and I applaud her for that, and she raised it to my attention, and I had a similar concern. So in our bid documents, it indicates that as you're the board's chief procurement officer, I have the authority to reject a bid process if it's in the best interest of the town. I contemplated that action, but before doing that, I wanted to make sure I was fully informed, so I had asked Megan to reach out to the Attorney General's Office, because they, in this instance, would be the ones to determine if it was a proper process, and therefore if the town could go forward. She indicates in the memo, the Attorney General's Construction Bid Unit was contacted to ensure the procurement process was done properly, and that this one company is able to bid on a project that they were involved in designing. The Attorney General's Office confirmed that the process is compliant and Design Built, Doing Business As Childscapes, is able to bid on the project, and then, as you see, they were by far the low bidder. So I do want to emphasize, and that's why I asked for that memorandum, to be written by our Assistant Town Administrator. I think a reasonable person looking at this may have similar concerns, so we did vet it with the Attorney General's Office, and given that they've indicated that there was, that the process was compliant, I opted not to invoke that, that measure as Chief Procurement Officer, to reject the bids and rather bring it to the board for this discussion. Having said that, based on this information and the training that Megan and I and anyone else in the town that does procurement has to go through, I do recommend that the board move forward on this, and I do recommend that the bid be awarded to Design Built LLC, Doing Business As Childscapes, for those reasons.
Thank you, Joe. Follow-up, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, because what I was saying is somewhat oblique, it's not about childscape. It's about an individual who made an assessment and then is repping for childscape. I'm disturbed about that. The state is looking for minimum ethical standards. I'm looking for the highest ethical standards, and that's a different thing.
Thank you, Don. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Three, one. Joe, just to go back, so you have it for the records. I think you were here for the four to zero vote to accept the money. B, we voted four to zero in favor of. C, we voted four to zero in favor of. And D, we voted four to zero in favor of.
No, we didn't get to D.
No, we haven't gotten to D. That's up.
And, sorry, Mr. Chairman, you're making reference to new business?
Yes.
So you dispatched of B, C, and D?
Yes.
Not D.
Not D.
Not D, sorry. That's what we picked up.
We're gonna do D right now.
And thank you, and I apologize, I recalled that I left my paperwork on short-term rental, ran downstairs and couldn't find it, so.
No, no worries.
Sorry for the disruption.
And I get a motion on D?
I move that we vote to approve a one-day entertainment license for the Harwich Historical Society, September 6th, 2021, noon to 2:00 PM, live music inside and outside, 80 Parallel Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, four zero, Joe?
Thank you.
E?
I move that we vote to approve the event application for the Harwich Chamber of Commerce Parade, to be held on September 12th at 11:30 AM.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion?
I don't think we should pass up the opportunity to ask Cindy to come up to the podium and say something about this.
I was gonna put F in that as well, so as soon as we read that.
Well, the betting line at the office was, it was either gonna be Mary or I that was gonna ask.
Okay.
Do you want me to do F, too?
Well, let's vote on this one, and then we'll vote on the next, and then we'll let Cindy tell us about both. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we vote to approve the event application for the Harwich Chamber of Commerce's fireworks to be held on September 18th at 8:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear, we're talking about item F.
Yes.
Regarding the fireworks, so what I'm distributing to the board and have a copy for both Ms. Williams and Mr. Galvin from the Chronicle, as you may recall, the last time this board had an opportunity and an ability to talk about fireworks was two years ago, and you may recall, there was a discussion regarding the local bylaw that still exists regarding the use of fireworks in certain well areas. So, Mr. Chairman, what I've presented to you is a statement from our Superintendent of Water and Wastewater for the board's consideration. He said, "I just want to share a statement regarding the request to approve fireworks at tonight's meeting. The request and application, the request application is consistent with prior years' fireworks display. The location proposed has been used historically as recently as 2019 with no issue. The location does conflict with the local zoning bylaw. This was also the case in 2019 when fireworks were first brought up and approved. It was the intent of the town to rescind the bylaw through town meeting. However, since we have not had a normal town meeting," his words, "not mine, but I agree with him in quotes, "that is contemplated in the future." What Dan also indicated is the board does have the right to approve this, notwithstanding that bylaw, as you did in 2019.
Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cindy, floor is yours.
Thank you. So just to update everyone, we have decided to go forward with the parade on Sunday, September 12th. Our grand marshal would have been last year if we could have done it, retired Fire Chief Norm Clark, so he is this year's grand marshal. And the theme is celebrating Harwich's seven villages. So in front of each village is a welcome to, say, East Harwich, and then the preceding businesses, organizations will be behind each of those. I am going to put a plea out for anyone in the seven villages, please, if you would like to be part of this, we would love to have you join it. Let's see, and then the fireworks. As Mr. Powers just mentioned, this is an annual thing that we are doing. Thank you to many wonderful sponsors that help me raise the money and funds to put this together for our town. So those will be September 18th, the Saturday night of Cranberry Festival, and we have already secured everything with the high school, so that the lights will be out when the fireworks go light up the sky, because we one year forgot to contact the high school. Won't say who, but me. And we're all set for that. So just looking forward to the fall and everything that we continue to do.
Thank you, Cindy.
Have you contacted the Fog Minister?
Ed, stop.
Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're gonna make my annual pitch here. I know Ed and I were sitting on a truck the last parade that got held. I can't think of anybody who actually represents all seven villages as much as the selectmen would. I would hope that we could have a presence in the parade. I've said this before, may sound corny, but I feel it's like our Norman Rockwell moment. I've never missed one that I.
I started the last two.
Somewhere along the line, you got kicked off the truck.
I will agree, Mr. McCaskill has started them. He's had his coffee in hand on Freeman, and he has waved to me saying, "I'm starting the parade."
I did notice that when I waved to him up by the curb side.
Yep. So I can agree, he has started the parade.
I'm just putting us all on the spot.
I, again, will always invite you and welcome you all. I will also let you know that so far, one of the three candidates has reached out and completed to be formed, to be in the parade, so I, also, anyone that is all running, please, if you would like to be in the parade, I do have the paperwork at the office.
Thank you. Joe, you had something?
I just didn't know if the statement that you started the parade would lead to the question that should not be asked of, did you finish the parade?
I wondered that.
No, no.
I might have. It was a long time ago.
And I'm not running, I was just sitting.
Joe, you're gonna open up the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you and the members of the board, first of all, I draw you to, draw your attention to the memorandum in the packet, and draw your attention to item, item E, which is an article to consider amendments to the regional agreement of the Monomoy Regional School District. First, I would like to start with that and then go back to the whole memo, but Dr. Carpenter did call me today and confirm that the regional agreement stipulates that any amendments to the agreement must be disposed of at an annual town meeting. So we are not allowed or able to have this come before our special town meeting contemplated for this fall. I would also ask you to think of that item E to be replaced by an article to consider amendments to our demolition delay bylaw, which was one of the first purposes of this special town meeting, and I neglected to put that on there. I did have a conversation with the Historic District Historical Commission Chair, Mary Mizlowski, and indicated that the Historic District Historical Commission is very much interested in having an article on the demolition delay to be contemplated by the board. So that the articles that you see there, items A through H, at this point do correspond with all of the articles that I've been aware of thus far, not to say that they will all make it, and not to say that there aren't more that may be contemplated. But if I could, Mr. Chairman, after having spoken with the town clerk, who also spoke with our moderator, both our town clerk, Anita Doucette, and moderator Michael Ford have confirmed their availability if we wish to contemplate a special town meeting. The date best available for them is Monday, October 18th, 2021, and so I dare say it right now with the risk of jinxing everything, we are contemplating a special town meeting at the community center indoors on a Monday evening in the fall. Obviously, as we deal with the pandemic and all of the resulting effects of that, things may be subject to change, but I do want to emphasize that that time of year and that date work for two of the three most critical actors, if you will, of that town meeting, being the moderator and the clerk, the other being, of course, your board members. What I have in the memorandum then is my understanding of the dates that are responsible, if you will, this is the calendar of activities that need to take place. I did share it last week, and counsel has confirmed that he believes the dates are correct. So if we're looking at a special town meeting to occur on Monday, October 18th at 6:30, the last date that the board should send articles to the Finance Committee for their review per the charter would be no later than Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021. The last date for the selectmen to confirm the articles and receive Finance Committee recommendations would be no later than Monday, September 27th, 2021. The last date for the selectmen to close the warrant would be Monday, September 27th, 2021, and that would be to meet the requirements of publishing the warrant. The publishing of the warrant in the Cape Cod Chronicle would have to occur by Thursday, September 30, and the last date to post the warrant would have to occur by Monday, October 4. I'd also add that the clerk confirmed that the last day for anyone who is not registered to vote, who would wish to participate in that town meeting and vote, is Friday, October 8 at 8:00 p.m. Beyond that, Mr. Chairman, I've identified potential articles. As you can see there, the first one would be an article to consider an appropriation to fund costs related to amending the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. This is a topic that the Board and administration have talked about. It is a topic that will be taken up next week more directly at your standalone meeting for wastewater. In conjunction with that, there's an article that considers an appropriation potentially for additional wastewater design and/or construction work in East Harwich as well as other locations within the town. Again, Water and Wastewater Superintendent Dan Pelletier will be able to speak to that strategy, if you will, that's being contemplated next week. It would also have an article that relates to the short-term rental tax and all of the lodging taxes, which we're gonna talk about momentarily. It may be necessary for the town to consider establishing a special stabilization fund if you contemplate a portion of the lodging tax to be used for funding of wastewater infrastructure. So that is a requirement under the general laws to create that special fund. I talked about the demolition delay bylaw amendment that's being contemplated. As the Board knows, there are, I believe, at least two collective bargaining agreements that were recently agreed by both parties. The appropriations related to those have to come before a town meeting, and the town through Board is obligated to make every best effort to have that come at a town meeting. So if we have the town meeting in October, we should have that article related as well. The Finance Director informed me that there is a potential article from Bond Council that relates to transferring surplus bond proceeds related to the Quint fire vehicle, which is a very positive thing, and obviously more on that later. And last but by no means least, an article that would allow certain parcels of land to be conveyed to the Board of Selectmen for your care, custody, and control. Right now, that's a general statement, there's nothing particular that's being contemplated, but there are any number of lands that we, as we go through the exercise that you talked at great length about last meeting, about owners unknown and things of that, we want to leverage that timing, that town meeting would be able to convey those lands to the Board. And then if I could read directly from the memo, I close by saying this is a sample of several topics which have been floated about since our annual town meeting. This sample is not conclusive nor is it final. The language in my memo is meant to be general until a further discussion is held to refine the article language and also in consultation with Council.
Thank you, Joe. I want to emphasize, not final.
Thank you.
A lot of what we've just discussed, we haven't discussed yet, and I, for one, won't be rushing to put things on a fall town meeting without educating the public. One, Joe, that I think we might want to add is changing where we can light off fireworks, the memo you just gave us.
Thank you very much, yep, change of the zoning bylaw regarding.
That would be a good one to add. As far as the historical one goes, they need to come back before us so the Board can vote. We tabled that one last year and the year before, I believe, but definitely last year, so I want historic before us as soon as possible.
And they're prepared to come to your meeting on September 7 to fully discuss that proposal.
And we'll discuss tomorrow morning whether or not next week will be standalone wastewater or we might add some topics.
Certainly.
Based on the timeline you gave us, we don't have a whole lot of time to plan this. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Working off of what you just said, just want to remind everybody that the Charter itself calls for, in the timeline, Joe, the review of bylaw and/or Charter revisions, they're supposed to be submitted to the Bylaw Charter Committee for recommendation at town meeting.
And to that end, Chair Sandy Hall reached out to me. I'll be attending their next meeting, which conveniently falls between those timelines, so if the Board has actions on the 30th and the 7th, I'll be able to communicate that officially.
Yeah, I bring that up because John's here, and this is his first cycle for this stuff. Everything that gets done, you would think that you could be done with your own hearing and a selectmen and then Finance Committee, but there's a requirement in the Charter that the, especially since the form and format matter, I mean, if it's misnumbered or refers to something incorrectly, that's what they're supposed to do.
Anything else, Don? Mary?
No, I'm with you. Some of this might be a little too quick, but it's a good, it's a good list to start working from.
Larry?
The only addition I would ask us to discuss is the Conservation Commission's bylaws. They were very anxious to put that on for the last meeting, and I think we at least need to have some further discussions ourselves whether we feel that they have enough time to get that out in the public more.
Thank you, Larry. I did ask Joe to alert staff that they should revoke that because it is a new commission and see if they still want it. I know on the planning board level, there was two planning articles that the new planners is not in favor of, and that they would be rewritten and readdressed, but certainly not for this town meeting. So the conservation one still needs to happen. Don?
And to Larry's point, I just, and you know this happened, they, they were not deterred by the lack of action for the town meeting article, they actually adopted a rule of operation at the committee level, and they've been imposing the change for the setbacks already. So it's not like they're gonna get harmed by waiting for a regular town meeting.
Go ahead, Larry.
Only in the sense that people have more confidence that we go through town meetings, and we want to open it up to more discussion.
Can I get a motion on?
Let me just one other comment. I've questioned in the past some of the legal findings regarding the school agreement. Could you confirm that, in fact, we can't do this in a spatial meeting? Have another attorney look at that because it seems like they've come back with other readings that.
We're the ones that found that, but go ahead, Joe.
Sure. When I met with Finance Director, Town Clerk, and I met with Dr. Carpenter two weeks ago to talk about that process, that's where we discovered that it states specifically in it. I had requested that Dr. Carpenter reach out to Attorney Mark Terry, who is the school district's attorney, for an opinion on that, and Dr. Carpenter did indicate that Attorney Terry indicated that would have to go to the annual. I don't know that we have an opinion yet, but I was looking to share that with Council to confirm. However, I understand it to be a certainty that it must go before annual town meeting. We can still work with the school district's attorney to get that vetted by our Council if you'd like, though.
I do. I'd like to be comfortable that we have, our hands are tied for another year, basically what that means, but I'd rather not wait.
You and me both. Can I motion on this specific to October 18? Is it 8? 18?
To call it.
To call it.
I move that we call a special town meeting for October 18, 2021 at 6:30 p.m.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four-zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll let you start this one, too, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, we're joined this evening by John Ideman, our Director of Planning and Community Development. That's John's two-minute warning that he's gonna get up and speak in a moment, but before John does that, I want to advise the Board that I had an all-hands department head meeting last Wednesday for the purpose of alerting our department heads that the Board is gonna have this initial discussion this evening, but also that the town will now be engaging in our decennial effort on our local comprehensive plan. As the department heads know, and as we talked about this evening and will talk about next week, it does dovetail nicely with the fact that through your direction, we're already looking to amend our Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, so there is some symmetry going on there with that. And we've also discussed a third effort, not that it's the third of the three, but it is part of it, but will come later, is reevaluating our housing production plan. At that meeting, I had asked John, and he gave an excellent summation to our department heads, not only of what they should expect going forward, but generally speaking about the process, and also offered some remarks that I found very educational where John has looked at past iterations of the town's local comprehensive plan, and it was helpful to hear you refer to it as a master plan, because I know that's what we call it off Cape, if you will. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if it's advisable, if you want to hear from our Director of Planning, he gave an excellent presentation last Wednesday, and I'd ask you to recreate that again, please, John.
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Joe. At the risk of boring you, I'm gonna take you, try to take you through a little education about master plans and local comprehensive plans. I hope it'll be illuminating and helpful. The town first did a master plan in 1969, again in 1993, 2000, and 2010. So really what we're talking about now is an update of the local comprehensive plan or master plan. The source of law and the Commonwealth for master plans are both in the same state law that, out of which planning boards and the subdivision control law originates, Chapter 41 of the general laws, but also of our own charter in the town of Harwich. Section 753 provides that the town can do a local comprehensive plan. The planning board is the responsible party there, and ultimately, that plan or any update thereof needs town meeting approval. It, however, does not distinguish between annual town meeting or special town meeting. So that's, that's good. The other statute where local comprehensive plans or master plans originates on Cape Cod is the Cape Cod Commission Act. The Cape Cod Commission Act, Cape Cod Commission cannot require any particular town on Cape Cod to do a local comprehensive plan. However, through the Cape Cod Commission Act, there's an opportunity for towns to approach the Cape Cod Commission to certify that a local master plan or local comprehensive plan is consistent with the regional plan. And there are a few benefits for doing so. I think the primary benefit of which is the Cape Cod Commission will assist the town in both the development of the plan and the implementation of the plan. That's also the origin of this, as Joe referred to, the decennial, the decennial nature of the plan. Both 10 years is good practice to update the plan, but the Cape Cod Commission Act and regulations also recite that 10 years is the period you should look to update master plans, and so that's what the Cape Cod Commission Regulations and Act say. I think one of the most important points to recognize with a local comprehensive plan or master plan is that it's a land use plan. It expresses the town's vision and goals for purposes of land use. It is not an operations or business plan for the town. It's really helpful for the town to have an operations plan, and that should work with the town's land use plan, but they're not one and the same. A local comprehensive plan includes separate but interrelated topics such as open space, economic and community development, infrastructure, capital facilities, housing, water resources, habitat, transportation, among other things. And some of the hotter topics you'll see in master planning are things like sustainability and climate change, which includes climate adaptation and climate mitigation. An LCP or master plan is a strategic plan in the sense that it not only contains goals and a vision, but it also contains an implementation plan which itself contains actions that the town commits to, to fulfill the goals and the vision that it has in that plan. And the typical types of actions that you see are things like a commitment to change regulations, to adopt policies and programs, to fund and install infrastructure, and to acquire land for a variety of different reasons, including to offset the effects of development or to restrict that land from, from development. The plan will help guide decision-making during that 10-year period following the plan during the implementation period of that plan. It can, as Joe alluded to, it's an important kind of framework, overarching framework to inform things like the update of subject matter plans, like the housing production plan or the open space plan, both of which are up for update now, they're about five years old. I think in our particular town, one of the most important reasons to update the land use master plan is to help inform the implementation that the select board and the water commissioners are going through with the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. Now, we clearly have a plan, but we've had lots of discussions with funding in our town and how we actually are going to implement and phase the plan and perhaps change some of that phasing. That overarching land use master plan should help assist the select board in how you go about doing that. I would say as a timeframe, what we should, what we should expect for the LCP is about two years. We have not yet gone to RFP. An RFP, I think, will be essential of the success of the plan by hiring a consultant to assist us with the plan. We have about $200,000 encumbered to essentially do this RFP and hire a consultant. I think it's also important to recognize that the consultant will help us with things like logistics, but it's critical that we, as town officials, town boards, town committees, really generate the content of the plan and develop the vision and the goals, because it's really our town's plan. We can't defer that or give that responsibility to a consultant. But certainly, a consultant can help us with some of the logistics of doing a plan and lead to that success, lead to a successful plan. Probably the thing that is critical to the success of the plan more than anything else is stakeholder engagement. It's, it's a challenge we have at the Board of Selectmen level, the planning board level, all of our boards. This local comprehensive plan ultimately has to be the plan that expresses the voice of everybody in our town. So getting, trying to do our best to get all those voices in the town and all that and all those interests engaged, I think, the consultant can help us with. Additionally, if this is a plan that we want to take to ultimately to certification with the Cape Cod Commission, we can enlist the Cape Cod Commission to help us both with developing the plan, stakeholder outreach, even things today you find are really helpful, things like surveys, and both the consultant and the Cape Cod Commission, I think, can help us with those things as well. And really, when I talk about stakeholders, I'm talking about the general citizenry, I'm talking about civic groups, nonprofit groups, businesses, because it's, it's interesting, it's not just our residents here. There are many people here who are business residents who are equally invested in the town. They should be involved as stakeholders as well. So really trying to define in the first instance who all those people should be who are, should be involved in the plan, and then keeping them involved all steps of the way. It's almost like we develop, you know, 15 different plans for all the different topics we have that have to interrelate within the plan, like open space or economic development, housing, transportation, et cetera. And then finally, it's the discussion we had the other day, our departments are all going to be involved, and at first blush, it doesn't appear that many of our departments would even be involved in a, in a land use plan, but the more you look at it, the more they are involved. Fire or police are traditionally not land use departments in the town in the same way that planning or conservation are, but they have to be involved in things like, say, even open space stewardship and ensuring that we have the ability to bring emergency services or fire apparatus out, you know, to our open spaces, things of that nature. It's something that doesn't strike you immediately as necessarily direct or relevant, but it tells the story that many of our departments that don't think of themselves initially as land use departments will be involved, and it's important that they're involved in the land use plan. That's what I have, and I'd be happy to take questions for you, and I'm excited to kind of disembark on this project because I, I think it's important for our community to do.
Thank you, Don. Before I get on to Board members, Joe, do you want to add anything to what John said?
No, again, John's done a great job, and that's not a surprise. It's one of the many reasons why we're fortunate to have him come to our town and help us. Timing couldn't be more perfect in that regard, and thank you again for that, John, tonight.
Thank you, Joe.
I think what we'd ask the Board is to start contemplating, as John just mentioned, you know, there's a request for proposal that I would have to assemble and send out, and I'd want to rely upon as many experts on that as I can, but we would look for guidance from the Board as to how you wish to engage this process, how quickly. And one of the things that John said, and to you, Mr. Chairman, and a comment that you had made before, is we will be relying upon outside experts, but it's going to be a locally crafted document, as it should be, and I think that's the precise tone to set as we do this. We will rely upon those who have an expertise in the framework, but it's incumbent upon all of us to add the language and the particulars as it relates to Harwich.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
As you mentioned the word, how quickly, when was this voted by town meeting, the $200,000 appropriation?
I believe it was two years ago.
Two years ago, I think.
Yeah.
Two years ago.
2019.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, John. I mean, we've had discussion about this. The last comprehensive plan, I've never held back my feelings on it, it really was tilted towards just build, baby, build. And... And the first one was, well, it's actually the second one, but in the nineties, it really looked at the different competing interests and how they actually fit together in a puzzle. And I say this because the one thing that wasn't said is this does translate into things that affect people. I mean, if there's a development or regional impact, it's, the Cape Cod Commission typically looks, well, what did you people ask for? And what, what did your master plan call for? And I know that happened in Dennis, and that kept getting thrown back at people. It was like, well, they voted to more robustly build out in their industrial area, so lows would be compatible with that. And I, at the time, it said, I doubt if you actually had a discussion at town meeting and said, if you want to vote for this, it's going to invite big box stores here, that anybody, that the overwhelming majority that did vote for it wouldn't have had a pause to say, well, wait a second now. This really has to be owned by the citizenry, because at the end of the day, it does translate in the actions that look somewhat abstract to the average public, but I mean, it's a roadmap to actual projects and what it is it looks like the town wants to have in certain places. So the citizenry has to be involved.
That's a, that's a great point about the Cape Cod Commission. One of their criteria for approval is, is the project, if we ever see a DRI here, they've been rare, is a project consistent with the town's local comprehensive plan. And in fact, even though we're not required under Massachusetts law to do this, it's good practice to bring one's regulations and bylaws into consistency with, with the master plan or local comprehensive plan.
Thank you, John. Mary?
Thanks, John. That looks like a huge undertaking, and I'm glad you're enthusiastic about it. It sounds very specialized as well. I'm guessing there are a limited number of people that do that type of work. Is, is that so? And how long would you think this process would take from the RFP to hiring someone to having a, a plan?
Well, I would, I, I think from RFP to town meeting would be about two years.
Okay.
And it is specialized work. Consultants who specialize in master plans, it is specialized work. It's a true planning process where that person kind of creates the, the framework for all the different voices and stakeholders to, to participate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Larry?
Thank you, Michael. As you know, and I think, Joe, as you know, I've been pressing to get this started now for probably a year and a half, two years. I see it as being, our number one priority is a town effort, because this really is a, as Don has mentioned, we all mentioned, this is our chance to get public engagement to, get everyone's input on what we look like when we grow up. And then, it's been part of the discussion that's hindered our wastewater management plan, and when we've talked about that, we, we're now embarking on a, with Housing Trust more of an affordable housing effort, but the Housing Production Plan is necessary for that, open space is necessary, but the, I'm repeating what others have said, but the public engagement on this, so everyone has the participat, and that's where the consultant, that would be, I think, our most important identifier, will be his ability to try to pull us together and have a, an open and respectful discussion, because we do know that we, we have to protect open space, but there are areas that we need to encourage growth. And, and we have to come to, and that's not an easy discussion. So, John, I very much appreciate your presentation and your, your tools and experience to bring this forward.
May I add one more thing, Mr. Chair?
May I?
Okay, it's something Joe mentioned, I forgot to bring up, these other plans that the town has done, and I'm thinking about your comment, Don. That plan from 2010 or 2011, you said it was like, build, baby, build. To me, it looked like an operations plan for the town. So that's one of the bookends that I, I don't think this LCP update should look like. The plan from 2000, it basically looked like the Cape Cod Commission's plan. It was very local, there was nothing very local about it. This is a good opportunity to find a plan, a land use plan, in the middle of those two different poles. I've asked Planning Staff to assist me in putting all the town's local comprehensive plans up on the web, website. They will be there in about a week or so. I think the best plan the town ever did is 1969, and many of those issues that were in there have come right back to us. Discussions about wastewater facilities, about, Mr. Chair, owners unknown land and trying to clear up title to owners unknown land.
That's discouraging, that.
Yeah. So everything old becomes new again.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we do the Housing Production Plan simultaneously? I know Selectman Anderson's doing kind of a deep dive into the Housing Committee right now and Housing Authority, and I plan on putting that back on the agenda within the next thirty days with whatever information we get back to have a more, a more general conversation on housing. But is it realistic to simultaneously do these?
I think that's a good term to use. I don't think it's realistic, given the resources necessary to focus on the LCP, but I also think it's better to lead with the LCP and have those principles, those updated principles, guide the development of a subject matter plan like the Housing Production Plan.
Thank you, John. Is it realistic, Joe, that we get a draft of an RFP on the September seventh? Timing, as you know, is really important.
I'm gonna look to one of my subject matter experts on that and say, do you think that me, you, Megan, and a few others can meet before then to get a, a draft RFP for September seventh?
I think we can. Charlene had actually begun an RFP.
Excellent.
Yeah. As you heard from Selectman Ballantyne, he's been asking for it for a year and a half, and we gotta stop kicking the can, so I would appreciate a draft on the seventh.
Yeah.
Anything else from board members?
No.
No.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Where are we now?
I snack shack.
Yes, Joe, this one is also you, and basically, since we leased the snack shack for one season, there's been a lot of interest in the five-year or up to a five-year contract, and I've had a lot of requests from the public on when we're gonna go out for that. So could you just outline what that's gonna look like timing-wise?
I can, and I'd like to add to that as well as if I could. Both of our town property restaurant locations, for lack of a better phrase, Sacro Tucket Harbor or what we can now call Jakes at the Harbor, as well as Cranberry Valley, excuse me, Hotstover Cranberry Valley, both of those come due this year, so they both expire in the same timeframe. So I have already been contemplating an RFP that, that gets to both locations. It's not required for any respondent to do both locations, but thought it would be helpful to put out there that the town now has two consistent operations where we own the equipment in both locations. Both locations offer phenomenal vistas, so that Megan and I have been working on this RFP concept since we did the one for Jakes at the Harbor. So we were planning on having that go out perhaps by mid-October, which to me is early because both contracts technically expire at the end of the calendar year. And so I've been talking it up with establishments around town and elsewhere that, you know, they should look for this RFP. If we do the October timeline, we would have something to come back to the board, certainly by the end of the calendar year, but by all means, well in advance of, for these establishments, their seasonal operations to begin in earnest in April of next year. So we're, we're already underway, and, and that's the, the mindset right now, unless the board has a different direction.
Comments from the board? Larry?
I think that's reasonable, as long as vendors are given the chance to bid on one or both.
Exactly, yep.
So we don't tie their hands.
It's very consistent language that says that.
Okay.
Yep.
Mary?
No, sounds great.
Don?
Same thing, sounds great.
And do you, does the board want to see the RFP before it goes out?
For me, I would only ask that we learn from our previous experience and not dictate the, the business side of it.
With a five-page menu.
And, you know, trust your RFP will, will attract professionals that can.
Absolutely, yep. Yeah, we didn't ask for menus.
So we're all set with not seeing?
Or Mary's words, put snacks back into the snack shack.
Thank you. Old business continued. Chatham, Harwich, wastewater intermunicipal agreement, proposed amendments. Joe?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I apologize, I, I do have to, if I may, check my work phone for an email that Dr. Bob Duncanson had sent out today. I believe it may relate to this first item, which is the approve amendment number one to the intermunicipal agreement, and so if you'll bear with me for a moment, I want to make sure that I have the corrected information. Okay. So what you see in the packet first is, there's a reason why we have Town of Chatham materials in your packet this evening. Technically speaking, the Chatham-Harwich wastewater intermunicipal agreement amendment number one is actually being proposed by the Town of Harwich, Harwich for consideration by the Chatham Select Board. The Chatham Select Board is scheduled to take these matters up tomorrow evening, and so what I can do is walk you through what, what Dr. Duncanson has put in as the narrative to the amendment, and then walk you to, through the document, amendment number one to the intermunicipal agreement. His note today was just to indicate that on our page, our signature page has to change to reflect that it's Select Board for Town of Chatham, not Board of Selectmen. But, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can go through amendment number one. It accomplishes many of the things that our working group, which presently is constituted by Selectman Ballantyne, myself, and Dan Pelletier as our Water-Wastewater Superintendent, we have our counterparts in Chatham, of course, being Jill Goldsmith, Town Manager, Dr. Duncanson, Director of Natural Resources, and Chatham also has David Whitcomb, former Selectman, and I know a driving force for wastewater in Chatham. And so we've been, been able to resume our regular meetings. We meet monthly, and so what we were able to do, as you can see from our draft minutes, is get into first part of the amendment, which is item number one and the amendment number one, and then that's been, that was contemplated before pandemic, and then, of course, pandemic interrupted the ability of the subgroup to meet, so that's the first thing to consider and go through. And then, secondly, as you may recall, we, we were seeking from the Town of Chatham an opportunity to change the capacity purchase fee, because, because of the impact of COVID on operations, there were a number of steps that were contemplated to take place over years, but it really sped it up so that if the Article Three is not amended, we'd be, the Town of Harwich is looking at payments close to $3 million in the same fiscal year that was never contemplated. So, Mr. Chairman, I can go through the amendments, but again, the statement generally is that these are amendments being requested through the Harwich Board of Selectmen for the board, the Select Board in Chatham to approve tomorrow evening. Your subcommittee representatives here in Harwich met with them, and all parties agree and recommend the approval of the amendments.
Thank you, Joe. Before you go through them, Don, do you, do you want them to go through them?
No.
Okay. Mary?
No, I've read them and understood them from previous discussions.
Yeah. Larry, do you want to give an overview based on the conversations? Brief overview?
I think Joe's done it, but just to briefly say that the amendments are to our benefit. And it appears that we had positive discussions with the Chatham agreeing that they were fair and reasonable to, to go forward with, and so I hope we do. I hope they do.
Can I get a motion?
Sure. My move, we approve the three amendments Joe described for the Chatham-Harwich intermunicipal agreement.
So Larry, if you would, just do improvement, approve amendment one as the motion as presented, because we're only doing one amendment.
Okay. You took words out of my mouth then, that's my motion.
So move. Can I get a second?
It's not just the IMA, it's the, the.
The IMA.
The Harwich Wastewater Intermunicipal Agreement.
I gave you a second.
That's what I heard you say.
Yes. Right, Larry?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, any discussion? Anyone in the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Short-term rental tax, we've talked about this an awful lot. I'm gonna take this up in two parts. So the first part is, right now, we're charging on the local option four percent. We have the option to go to six percent. Six percent's been brought to the table twice, and it's been voted down twice because the money just goes into the general fund, and the board didn't support that. So we've, in the last two conversations, we've discussed putting the money into something. Joe, do you want to give an overview of our conversation and your conversation with the Finance Director?
Certainly. So, as you know, generally, the short-term rental tax was introduced in the Commonwealth, I believe, two fiscal years previously. As I indicated before I ran downstairs to get my notes, we have received information from the Division of Local Services and the Department of Revenue for what that equates to for fiscal year 2021, and it's just over a million dollars. That's based on the tax rate of four percent. So that's four percent on hotel, motel, and short-term rental. So if the board is contemplating, it has to contemplate a, an increase from four to six percent across those three categories. It cannot solely be short-term rental. So to say that you're going to increase your lodging tax would be hotel, motel, and short-term rental. So we, the board does have the authority to engage in that discussion. It will require a town meeting action at some level, based on the, the end result of the funds and all that. I can tell you that the state provides numerous data points on this, and as it relates to our immediate neighbors, Brewster, Dennis, and Orleans are all at the six percent level. It is simply Chatham and Harwich and our general area that are not, that remain at four percent. So this, this is something that our, our neighbors have done. In those instances, they, I believe they went to the six percent many years ago, with the exception of Orleans, who did it, excuse me, Dennis did it two years ago, and, nope, sorry, Orleans did it two years ago, Dennis did it a year ago. Brewster's been since day one.
And eight communities right now are at the six percent, two more working on it, plus us. So that's on the two percent. Joe, isn't the number closer to 1.2 million for this year?
I can tell you that, so we, we don't have, don't have any information yet for fiscal year twenty-two. They do now report on a quarterly basis, so we'll have that in early October.
So last year's.
So last year's, we were at 1,132,927, and that was only lodging. I believe Mills was an additional 400,000, but for lodging, it was 1.13.
Thank you, John. The board, we've taken up a lot of very serious discussions lately on costs, affordable housing, wastewater, OPEB, and those are three categories that I think that we could make a dedicated funding source for the, for the four percent minority collecting, and then give the board's consideration for the additional two percent. I'll open it up to the board. Larry?
Things I mentioned last time, I voted against this, but things have changed. I was worried about how we compete with our neighboring communities, but everyone, everyone's moved now pretty much to, from four to six percent. We also, I think, agreed as a board last time that we're uncomfortable putting it into the general fund. With dedicated funds that you, that you raised, Michael, I, I would support this, going to town meeting to move the, to raise the race to six percent.
And to allocate the current four percent into some buckets?
Absolutely, that's part of that.
Mary?
I agree. I think we should do it. Most towns have, and I agree, what's more important than housing, wastewater? And I'd ask Carol Coppola if she feels we need this addition to OPEB, is that how we say that?
Yes.
If that really needs an additional boost, because frankly, wastewater and housing look like the killer items to me.
Don?
Just to follow up on Mary's head first, other.
Post-employment benefits.
Other post-employment benefits, because everybody hears these acronyms, and nobody actually knows what the heck they mean. Can we afford, on the four percent part of that, to take that away from operations? I'm assuming it's in operations.
So, thank you, and, and to respond immediately to that question, earlier questions and comments, Carol and I met last week and did a significant, you know, deep dive into the numbers and the potential allocations. So if the board's looking to take that additional 33% increase to go from four to six, and say, okay, that, the two that you add, that are the two percent that's now there, that 300, 400,000, if you want to earmark that, we would get into the discussion of the priorities, if you will. But the first thing we would ask you to understand is that presently, and it's neither good nor bad, but as the board has said before, these, these nor bad, but as the board has said before, these, these funds have gone unallocated, if you were, or I should say, un-airmarked. So that is to say that they go to the general fund. It is a true statement to say that we have been relying upon those dollars to support our operating budget. So that as we get into this exercise of allocating or earmarking, we need to be mindful of that. So fiscal year 21 was the high watermark of the 1.13 million. The prior year, I think, was just under a million. And of course, before that, before we saw short-term rental, I think we were just over 600,000. So to Selectman Howell's question is if we move these dollars around, if we're taking them to any of those budget busters, to use a phrase, we're also impacting upon the operating budget specifically to the, so I hope that answers Selectman Howell's question, meaning we should be mindful as we move these dollars into buckets, if you will, that we will be impacting upon our operating budget. It's neither good nor bad. It just needs to be a mindful and conscious decision. With regard to wastewater, housing and OPEB, those were the major areas that, that Carol and I talked about. Not my original thinking, so I give credit to Carol where she was able to frame it in a way that was very helpful for me. OPEB right now for the town is roughly a $42 million liability, if you will. We're looking at wastewater at being close to a 400 million, if not greater, liability.
Much greater.
And then, of course, you know, housing doesn't seem to have a natural number or support, if you will. So the first thing that we would ask from staff tonight, as you get into that, is are you contemplating sincerely from going from four to six? And then how would you allocate the entire 6%? The chairman gave me some useful information from one of our neighbors and how they did it, and it's something that I would contemplate. You know, they, they earmarked a certain percentage, 50% would go here. They then talked about at least 25%, I believe, for wastewater until they reach a certain pool of money, if you will. And then they talked about a capital stabilization. So there's a lot of good opportunities for us to explore. But first, I think the, the discussion should go back to, do we wish to go from four to six? I would urge the board that I think it's an appropriate action. You know, a member said earlier in her inaugural speech, so I just identified her, that we need to chase revenue, and we do. And this is something that is, is happening all around us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, these are somewhat disparate comments, but they all kind of relate to this. Reason I brought that up is Larry was right. I mean, I voted against adopting the 2% also because it's, your answer to my question points out that this is an addictive process. If we just take it unencumbered, you never get to the point where you can say, well, this is more important for us now because your operations are totally dependent on whatever you've just accepted. Now, that's the bad news. The good news is, I don't think it had to do with COVID or anything else. The, the dates that you're talking about really coincide with a change in the class of dwelling that was getting assessed, the, the percentage, because heretofore, the people who owned their own houses and rented them out weren't subject to this. So there's a whole bunch of new inventory that was included. It wasn't just because a whole bunch more people showed up. But especially in wastewater, I mean, I'm, I'm a housing advocate, I admit that, but especially in wastewater, it's really easy to argue that the more people come here and drink and use the facilities and then leave, leaves us with a problem for the rest of the year, that we have to be able to fund somehow. And it does seem fair that if they created part of the problem, that they should help fund the solution to part of that problem. Where that percentage falls, I don't know because Joe's right. I mean, I can't really put a number on the, the housing because I don't think it's a static thing. I mean, if, if we were able to really hit a couple of home runs in housing inventory, it might change the calculus about what the percentage is that you need, but I doubt when you're talking about almost a half, you know, a half a trillion dollars that the calculus on wastewater is going to change. That just seems to be going straight north. We're going to have to consider making sure that we can pay for this because literally we got, I mean, how many residences in the town? About 6,000, 7,000? I'm not talking about residents.
Are you talking about dwellings?
Yeah.
I don't have that. I want to say it's at least over 4,000.
Yeah, it's, it's no more than 6,000.
I can tell you a number of souls, I can tell you how many people register for the short-term rental tax database, but I can't tell you that one.
It's, when you put it that way, when I talk to people, I put it that way, it's a daunting figure. If you've got just a few thousand residents that are paying these taxes and then all of a sudden you have to say, and you're going to have to fund a half a trillion dollars worth of infrastructure over the next years, that's a big number. I mean, to divide amongst that small a number of people in dwellings, so.
Joe, you had a follow-up to that?
Just that as you consider this, and it's more a reminder for the general public, you know, there was that draft article that we contemplated for this year's annual town meeting. But we're the town to go from 4 to 6%. It also requires the vote of town meeting, and you can incorporate in that article a start date that, say, would be January 1st, 2023, so that we're giving ample notice in October of 2021 that the town is going this route, but it wouldn't impact perhaps rentals that are already being made for the next summer. But the town has the ability to create that start date and it does not, does not have to be immediate.
Thank you.
Can I correct myself first?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I had an Edward Dirksen moment there. It's a billion, not trillion, but in his words, a million here, a million there, pretty soon you're talking about real money.
Mary, you had a follow-up?
The Housing Production Plan talks about 6,131 houses.
Very good.
Whether that's accurate or not, I don't know.
I think it is.
Because I can't find where we got that number. I'm still with let's do it. And I do agree with Joe, there should be some notice to the businesses. I remember when it got debated before, was it last year's town meeting or the year before?
Year before.
That was the biggest argument was, you know, we've already got people committed. So I think the businesses need, need, need that notice. I don't think it can be effective tomorrow.
Yeah, it has to be voted by town meeting, so it's not going to be effective tomorrow anyway. So I think we just have to look at a calendar and say, what's a fair amount of time? Because I think we have to get going on this.
Yeah.
We're either going to do it or we're not. Larry?
No further comments. Let's go.
Joe, will you share with the board Carol's suggestion? We bounced around percentages in your office.
Well, I, I can. So first of all, I'm obligated to say that I suggested to our Finance Director that she did not need to be here this evening so that she could celebrate her husband Ralph's birthday. Happy birthday, Ralph. Many happy returns. But to be fair, neither Carol nor I came up with percentages. Rather, what we talked about at length was whether we do categories or similar to Brewster, if you will, where we do categories and additional funding source for capital or something like that. So if the board is telling us that we should contemplate an overall lodging tax of 6%, you know, we can divine from that what it's potentially going to look like and have more information come back to the board. I also want to advise you that as part of your standalone meeting next week on wastewater, whether it remains that or not, one of the topics we have contemplated for that is a discussion about funding mechanisms for wastewater going forward. And so that conversation next week could have a large part of that. We did any number of permutations and it sounds like a lot. On one hand, it's really not because you're slicing up, and I say this with the risk of being drawn and quartered out in the public square, only 1.3 million. Easy to say, but when you put that in comparison to a $70 million enterprise known as the Town of Harwich, or you look at that with $42 million in OPEB unfunded liability or 400 million, it really does start to pale in comparison. So it, it's going to be helpful, but it's not going to be game-changing either, unfortunately.
So just to add to that, Joe, it's a $73.4 million corporation and we're 1.8 million short five years from now. That was the last five-year projection, but it can't be completely wrong. I won't put you on the spot, but Carol had mentioned roughly 50% leaving it in, and I go back to Selectman Howell's comments, 50% leaving it in there for general fund to continue on operation. I thought that was extremely aggressive, and, and, and I say that because the operating budget includes line items every year for OPEB wastewater, and the only one that it does in is housing. So we're already budgeting money. We would just be taking that out of a general category and making it part of a direct funding source. So I don't see why we couldn't go deeper into the 4% or 6% depending on how the board votes.
True.
I would ask that, I would ask that, I'm going to put it to the public in a minute for comment, but Joe, I, I think that we look at the numbers of what we're already allocating in the operating budget and then pick some reasonable percentages to go into these categories. Wastewater, I think, has to be the, the star in that. But we need to, we need to think about land acquisition, and that's something that the board has really just taken up. But as we look at some of maybe eminent domain takings or purchasing of land for pump stations, I think that the articles have to be specific that would allow for land acquisition. And I would say that they should be specific for land acquisition for housing as well. Because as we embark on housing, we have the ability to sell properties and use the money to build. So it doesn't have to be specific to take this lot and build a house on that location. If town meeting agrees, we could sell that lot, or the trust agrees, we can sell that lot to build something, say, on the Marseline property that we just bought, or maybe acquire some of the other properties that are bought that to make that a larger project. Do you want, and we'll go to a vote, I think, tonight on the 2%. Do you want to come back to us with reasonable percentages and have a further conversation? And what I'm trying to do is not continue to kick the can.
Sure.
And we have a lot of very important meetings coming up.
Mm-hmm.
And we hurt our timeline tonight if we want to get this done in October. The board can't keep bringing this back.
Sure.
So I think the board should leave here tonight, giving the town administrators some direction on percentages. And then the Finance Director and the Town Administrator should come back and say that's not reasonable, if it's not.
Right.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One more food for thought here is that so far, the trust has been fueled mainly by CPC money, and that has huge strings attached to it. You can't spend it on anything above 80% area median income or down. I would advocate that we probably want to have a carve-out in this because the chair's own feelings on this subject are well-known. If we had our own funding source, and I don't mean just for acquiring land, but for actually possibly buying down development costs for somebody building these things, we are currently not capable of doing the 100 or 120% that would represent the low end of the market rates to allow for upward mobility. We're stuck with that same ladder analogy I gave you where there's two rungs missing and you can't get up there, but you're stopped here because of the rules for most of the money we have right now.
Yeah, and I would argue, Don, that we're 10 years late to the game.
Oh, yeah.
And continue to talk about workforce housing and affordable housing until it's completely gone.
Yep.
So I think that this is an important one, and I think it's an important one for fall town meeting, not waiting until spring.
But it comes with no strings, is what I'm saying. We could make whatever it is we want as the rules.
Agreed. Mary?
Can I just make a suggestion, Joe? I think we all agree wastewater is key, plus the price tag on wastewater we know is huge. Just, just for a start point, let's say 50% wastewater, 25% of those benefits.
OPEB. OPEB, yep.
OPEB, and 25% for housing where we know, to Chairman McCaskill's point, we can find money in other places by taking properties or purchasing properties and then using that money.
Land acquisition.
So that's my land acquisition. So that's my proposal.
So it's 50% wastewater, 25%?
50% waste, 25% each for the other two.
OPEB and housing.
And let you and Carol tweak that, if you will.
True.
Mary?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. I do think that, going back to beginning, we should, I'd like to make a, like to move that we go to town meeting increasing the rental tax from 4 to 6%. So, and then come back and have a second motion on their suggestion for the allocation. My motion is to increase from 4 to 6%.
Second.
All right. Moved in second, and we'll get into discussion.
Thank you. So I heard you say short-term rental, but I believe we mean by that lodging tax.
I mean lodging tax because you've clarified earlier, Joe, that we can't separate the two.
Thank you.
Which I remember.
Okay, now discussion, Don?
Yeah, I, I can't vote for it unless it actually says, provided that those funds are earmarked at a future date, specific areas. Because otherwise, they just go back to general receipts.
No, no, I'm, I'll add that to my motion. My reluctance was to, I like Mary's suggestion, but I'd like to have some feedback on, on taking into account, Michael, you said, what are we paying now?
All I'm saying is that provided that we come up with an acceptable formula.
Right.
That's part of your motion?
That's part of my motion.
That was part of your second.
That was part of my second.
Okay. And I, and I agree with you, Don, with the exception of, in, in general, we're going to vote this article. We can vote no later. And I won't vote for it unless we're putting it someplace besides the town.
And I've mentioned that before.
I'm going to open it up to the public because we're talking about raising a rental tax. So anyone in the public want to comment? All set? Joe, anything further?
No, thank you.
Further discussion from the board?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0, Joe. And then, Joe, we'll look for you. Were you all comfortable with that percentage structure of whatever percentage that Joe and Carol decide can come out of the operating budget? That that would be how we would vote the buckets?
Yep.
So you have enough direction?
Absolutely, yep. Thank you.
Great.
And if, just a reminder that you're going to have the similar discussion next week about wastewater specifically. So we know that we can contemplate a component of this and the overall wastewater funding components.
And not to pile on work to your week, but we'll talk about that tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
It'd be nice if we had some sort of proposal going into the wastewater meeting, not that the board's going to vote it, but that that conversation can happen on what percentage and, and a rough dollar amount.
Okay.
Please?
Yep.
All right. Next one up is the community center. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just advise you that I had discussions today with our community center director, our public works director, the assistant town administrator, and I, the, the topic was strategizing on what do we need to do? What steps do we need to take to get the community center to resume pre-pandemic hours? I'm going to try this from memory. I'm going to look over to my left when you can shake your head yes or no when I get the hours wrong, which I believe would be Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Saturday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM?
Nine.
Say again?
Nine.
Nine, nine to four, and 10 to three on Sunday. So that was, that was the message to the group of if we were, if we're going to do that, how do we get there? So I have directed Len and Carolyn to, to, to further analyze that. And since our last conversation, they have reached out to other communities. And what I want to really convey this evening first is perhaps an opportunity to try to reset expectations. And by that, I mean, if we are going to accomplish that specific goal of reopening the community center for those hours as we did pre-pandemic, something else may end up having to give because what we're finding as we speak to other communities, and you've heard me say before, that we have some staffing issues as it relates to custodial services because we had to reconfigure how our custodians work in the age of pandemic and health crises. We have them doing far more buildings and far more cleaning than we did before. So that's one of the things that's impacting on the full reopening. We've heard from other communities that they're in a similar situation. And so I think it's appropriate for me to say that, you know, here in town government, we don't necessarily have the signs on the doors that you'll see in many businesses and establishments. And as we see them now as a sign, literally, of the times where you can go to a restaurant or any retail operation and there's a sign that tells you that due to the pandemic, there's either labor shortages or there's material shortages and there's goods shortages. Well, municipal government was not spared from that either. We're hearing from our colleagues around the Cape and elsewhere that they're running into similar situations. We advertise constantly for additional custodial services and we get no one. And that's indicative of the labor shortages that have been going on related to pandemic. And so, again, the charge to, to Len and Carolyn is to take the mission of trying to reopen the community center as it was in pre-pandemic. What does that require and how do we get there? I've asked them to look at, there are positions presently in the personnel bylaws that fall under my jurisdiction, meaning we don't have to create new positions that talk about substitute custodians, that talk about program aides, and maybe we can rely upon that. But I, I would be remiss if I did not say that Town of Harwich, like any other business, is not immune to the effects of the pandemic and is not immune to the effects of the pandemic, and we're finding it difficult to fill certain roles because of the labor shortages that are out there.
So it sounds like you're thinking outside the box.
We're, we're trying to. We, absolutely.
We don't have to just advertise for a custodian, custodian and get one to open that building, right? We could get a attendant of some sort.
Exactly. And that's, that's what we're trying to look at, is let's look at positions that already exist in the personnel bylaws that have a wage scale already there, and perhaps that's the way to do it. So I think we had a great meeting today, and I want to emphasize that Carolyn, Lenk, Megan, they remain, as always, committed to that effort, and they know the directive. We're just trying to get there in a way that, that benefits everybody, and it makes the programs successful when we reopen to that level. So they've then continued to do great work in strategizing in what are difficult times.
Thank you. Don? Anything? I'm going to start with the board. Don, nothing?
I appreciate everybody trying to collaborate on this because it's really important to get the building open to when people can use it.
Mary?
I agree. Thank you for your effort.
Larry?
No other comment?
All set. Ed?
I'd just like to encourage you to do whatever you can to open the building, especially with schools starting. Kids need some place to be after school. And with, personally, with the Cranberry Festival, I'd much, I'm hopeful that we can open it during that weekend because the alternative is I'm going to have to spend $4,000 to rent an additional 15 porta potties, which nobody likes using, as opposed to being able to use the restrooms in the building. And I also earlier mentioned that our committee's having its meeting at Brooks Park under the Cypress Tree. It's nice. That's, we're doing that because our normal time of meeting at 7:30 in the community center isn't available, and at some point, it's going to get cold enough that meeting under the Cypress Tree is not going to be an alternative. So I urge you.
Joe?
Thank you. To, to the previous speaker, I will say that we may have greater short term success supporting the Cranberry Festival on that weekend because we might be able to have outside services to that building for those cleaning needs. But for an ongoing concern, it's, it's not viable. So we are hopeful that we can support the festival because of all it means for our town. That solution, however, is not going to work long term for the ongoing operation.
So you do think we can reallocate for that weekend to get that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I think it's a legitimate priority.
Thank you. Mark?
Mark Kelleher, West Howard's. Consider contract cleaners, condominiums, spell out the town, use them. You don't have to worry about OPEB costs. It's thinking outside the box. Thanks.
Any other comments? All set? Contracts? Yeah, someone else should make the motion. Why don't we, before we get into this, why don't the two members that support committees make their statements?
The next discussion is on human service grants, which I will recuse myself from. I write the grants for the Family Pantry of Cape Cod, who is one of the nonprofits, and I'm actually paid for that work.
Thank you.
So I need to leave my seat.
Sit in the front row. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apparently need a better business agent. I too am involved in one of the grants that was written for site loss services. Unlike Mary, I didn't get paid for that. So I wasn't involved in the evaluation process in any way, shape or form. So given the fact I'm not compensated divulging this to the public, and I will participate.
Thank you, Don. Larry?
With that, I move that we approve the allocation funds as presented for the human services grants.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3-0-0, Joe?
Thank you.
And then, Mary, I'm going to let you make the motion on the next contract.
I move that we vote to execute the contract with Spencer Preservation Group for the Brooks Academy Museum Structural Approvements in accordance with the task and fee schedule, not to exceed $118,350.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ed? We'll take back our vote. We're on discussion.
Really not a critical discussion, but having worked with Lynn Spencer on a number of historic preservation projects on the Cape, I can't be more pleased that you're selecting her and will be contracting with her.
Thank you, Ed. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to advise the board that going around, we did receive this evening, prior to the meeting, the signed contract by Spencer Group, so they have finally executed it. So it's fully prepared for the board's signature so that we can get moving on this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0, Joe? Town administrators report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some quick updates. First is some lesser procurements and contracts, but still necessary. I executed a contract on behalf of the golf course operations. This would be the necessary installation of hardware several months ago, or let's say two months ago, at least, there was a lightning strike that hit upon the pump house, which impacted the movement of water there. So we had to...
Excuse me, Joe.
Yep.
Guys, could you, out in the hallway, please? Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. We had to take affirmative action to replace the pump. We had funds available through our capital. So that is a contract in the amount of $28,161 to Automatic Pump Company. And again, it's replacing the jockey pump, which was destroyed by a, a natural event called lightning. No, no. Yeah, thankfully, no. That was just good old fashioned lightning. You can see that we also have an agreement that was executed by, really first to start out with through the county, and so we're relying upon the Siegel Group. It was a procurement through Barnstable County. The town has jumped on board of that for actuarial consulting services. And if memory serves correctly, I believe our dollar amount, I had it here a moment ago. Give me one moment, Mr. Chair, if I may. Well, I believe it was less than $10,000, and as soon as I stop looking at it, and you do your selectman reports, I'll find the number. But again, that contract was executed, and that's extremely useful services for our finance director. And then, at this point, that would be concluding my report, other than to say that I'm very grateful that Henri didn't impact us, but kudos to everybody in municipal government for their flexibility as, as we were reporting out to the board. We were prepared for whatever the storm may bring, and very grateful that it didn't bring anything to deal with.
Thank you, Joe.
That concludes my report.
Selectmen's report, Larry?
The Treasury Chess Committee has posted a meeting for tomorrow in this room at 4:30 to discuss possible, possibilities.
Thank you, Larry.